Please rise to the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're going to move right into our presentation of competency-based education initiative.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Tonight, we're going to hear from Seabrook Middle School. Last month, we heard from Seabrook Elementary School, so we're going to alternate months so that you have a chance to see a little bit of both and have competency-based education in both elementary and middle. So for tonight, we have Caitlin French, who's an eighth-grade science teacher. And she's going to kind of talk us through some of her curriculum mapping that she's been doing regarding competencies. And the mapping is something that all the teachers are doing in the elementary as well as in the middle. It's kind of picked up from previous years and being developed a little bit further this year in regards to competencies. So you're going to get a chance to see her map and she's going to talk you through that. So I thought it was a good way for people to see... The QPA is the Quality Performance Assessment, so that kind of one-shot assessment that you can see. But this, that you'll see tonight, something across time, months. And you can see the planning that goes involved with, from the teacher's point of view. So, hold on, get the slide. Maybe you can put the next slide to yours. Okay. So just because, as an overview, I'm sure that this is something that's familiar to everybody here. But when we're thinking about the competencies versus just teaching to standards, the competencies are a shift in that the work is about enduring long-term goals for students. These are large concepts that students are meant to master through application of the ideas versus snapshots of quizzes or tests or short projects. The competencies are broader. They're the umbrella that goes over the standards that teachers teach. And they're really, they're looked at across time with a body of student work, not just a one-and-done kind of quiz, but something that a teacher plans for across, in this case, that you'll see tonight, several months to really master one of these competencies. They're quite complex with many standards and activities inside them. She'll be able to show you some of that. So as far as the purpose of the maps, the maps that you're going to, one of the maps you're going to see tonight, the maps are kind of multi-dimensional that the teachers are creating. They have the national standards in them. They have the work that the SAU is doing with the leadership teams. The whole SAU is broken down into leadership teams and they're creating competency language. That's in the map. The instructional learning targets that teachers use every day with students are in the map. And also the methods of the assessments that teachers use are also in the map. So the maps are really going to prove, I hope, to be really powerful tools for teachers and for looking at vertical ideas, looking at gaps, planning for professional development, and looking at things on a larger scale. Okay? And she's going to take over from here.
So the first thing I'll tell you about is you've seen some of the pictures. This kind of is just, you'll see some of the activities, but all the pictures have to do with this one activity I did with the kids, which was a great hands-on. We actually went outside and measured, but they scaled all the planets down to a measurable size that we could actually use meter sticks to do. So they had a good time and it really like solidified that idea of how massive some planets are compared to ours and really how far apart they are from the sun. So that's what all those images are that you've seen through the presentation. So using the National Standards, as at SAU, we got together and we actually wrote the competencies that you're going to see in the guide. And it was kind of great to get together with the other teachers because you see some different perspectives and it was nice to work with them and all work together in groups. And then we wrote these competencies, which I then used to help structure my units and structure my instruction throughout the year. And then the competency is really that end goal of a unit, like did we encompass and get everything that's in that competency? And then the map helps me make sure everything is lining up and that all my units kind of go together and it helps me pace throughout the year. And it's also a really great reflective tool, so sometimes I'll make notes off to the side like, hmm, I think I should move this and teach this at this time next year. And it really helps me improve my instruction for the future and get better every year. So here's the actual map that I use. So first, you'll see the standards and then those kind of funnel together and create those competency statements that are next. So we have all the national standards on the first side and you can also see the months that they were taught. And then we have the competency. And you'll notice it repeats because there's so much within that competency that if you really unpack it, that it actually takes a long time to make sure you're hitting every single thing you need to hit within it. And then if we go over next, the ICANN statements are some of the day-to-day things that would be on the board for a lesson that I'm teaching. It's not all of them. All of them are right here in this binder for this unit. So this is the actual, everything I did. But that's just a snapshot of like three to four different things we did in that unit. And then I actually have links to the activities. You can see exactly what activity related to that statement to see what the kids were doing. And lastly, some of the assessment tools that I use. Those are mostly the summative assessments, the kind of big idea end-of-unit assessments with some formative check-ins in there. So we're actually going to go to some of the activities. So this is a moon lab that we did. And if we scroll down a little bit, you can kind of see, this isn't pictures of my students, but this is where I got the inspiration from, is they actually created a whole model and we were able to actually create solar and lunar eclipses. Because it's one thing to see it in the sky, but that doesn't really help you learn what's happening, like what's actually going on, where's the Earth, where's the moon, where's the sun? So it was a great hands-on way to really show them where all these things are and they could create it and see how it really worked. Constellations, yeah. So this came towards the end of my astronomy unit. And the kids actually created their own constellation. So that website and the first link actually takes you to a sky map and you can select any day of the year you want, any time of the day. So some of the kids went back and did their birthday or some just did the night before. But you can see all the stars in the sky from your vantage point, like what you would see if you went outside and looked up at night. And we actually took the lines off so they couldn't see the actual constellations and they just connected some stars together and made up their own. And then it was a nice kind of interdisciplinary activity because they actually then had to write a story about the constellation because all the constellations come from, there's some sort of myth associated with them. So we were able to get a little ELA in with the science. And then another hyperlink. So these are some of the competencies that we actually wrote as an SAU. So these are the science and engineering practices that go along with all the science standards. So they stem from the National Science Standards. And then the bullet points off to the side is like everything that would be inside of that. And then we wrote a more broad statement on the left side. That kind of is the overarching idea of that particular thing.
Questions? Do you have any questions?
I have a question. So if I was to go to like the high school and do this, I'd see very similar standards being met because it's national. I mean, the national standard to me means it's going across all the classes because you're saying you're making it a little bit broader. They get a little bit more focused in when I go to high school. And if we go to elementary, it's even more broad than the middle school.
Yeah, so it's the National, NGSS, which is the National Science Standard. So written on a national level. And then middle school is a little bit broader. And then once you go to high school, it'll be like just biology. We spend a lot of time learning biology where I have one biology unit instead of an entire year. So this is kind of, middle school is teaching them those scientific skills and starting to learn how to be a scientist, think like a scientist. So hopefully, when they get to high school, they're able to really dive into the content really, really deep.
So if we step this back and go back to elementary, it gets more broader than what you're doing, correct?
Yeah, and it'll be kind of simpler ideas. Like as you go through school, the ideas get more complex and they kind of bridge and build on each other.
Because some of the questions we asked last time, how low can we actually push to have our kids learn something? And then it was like, well, you got to realize that what we're asking them to learn down here in elementary school is like that big overall arching picture. But when you get to middle school, all right, we're getting a little bit closer. We're in high school, we're right on the point where we want to be. So it's kind of like a longevity piece and I can see how that's working now. And this makes quite a bit more sense.
Yeah, and I think I wanted you to see this because I wanted you to understand that the places that the competencies are coming from are from national standards. These aren't, these documents, this NGSS document is extremely complex. It's a fantastic curriculum document. It has three dimensions to it, lots of resources from the lower grades all the way through. So teachers are working often with national documents that they're in all the areas of the curriculum. So then from there, each district, you know, has worked through, through these collaborative groups and how it plays out in their district, but essentially, it's driven by the national standard. But I wanted you to be able to see that too.
Well, it's nicer when you see the actual national standard, what we're doing, they break it down even further.
Yep, into the class and into the student. And then we can see the actual student experience that's created is hands-on. You can see the things that they're doing in the class are really project-based. And their transference of understanding, it's not the old rote kind of memorization or recall. It's really about transference and that's what, that's what the competencies really push teachers to do.
The only question I have is, is it possible to get these PowerPoints put into our board docs so that we can take a look at it prior to, because showing all this information, I would like to ask, you know, have a little more depth of questions to come back on. I don't know if it, I know some of this, what you guys talked about was off the, off your own, you know, literature that you had, but like the PowerPoint, so we can just take it, kind of get a grasp of what we're going to be talking about during this thing.
No, that's excellent.
I noticed it's the second one, but you know, it might help us.
And I know you want to be prepared for questions at the board meeting. I would also add, though, on the backend, I'd like to put these up on the SAU website to give us kind of a narrative of our, of our journey here across all districts.
But you know, because when we take a look at it and we read through all of our minutes and we're trying to read and, you know, ask, have questions ready for when you guys get here, if we haven't asked them prior to, just a little bit of, you know, foresight.
That's excellent, yeah. Good feedback.
Hopefully too. Thanks.
A question. Going back to one of our initiatives of sharing resources such, and I think that David alluded to it. This is posted on the SAU website, so it's shared amongst the other districts. So we're not recreating wheel every single district. Is that a possibility? I don't know how that would work.
Sure, we can, I mean, these curriculum maps, we can share across the SAU. I think the more valuable thing that Caitlin alluded to is the ability for them to sit down. And that's really what we did on November 20th was they, yeah, they had these big umbrella ideas of competencies, but they really started to bundle the standards that were underneath in a way that made sense to all teachers across the SAU. And in coming into spring, what we're going to be able to do is pass this, we're actually going to be able to bring student work to the table and say, hey, look, what does competency look like at your school? Does it look the same at my school? Right. That's the really good PD that we're planning on for March and May.
And I can see that this is really driving, like you said, when you're met with everybody and you can talk amongst all the schools at the same time and everybody's trying to go for the same goal. Because we discussed this multiple times in our board meetings of, is Seabrook as radius, North Hampton and Hampton Falls and Southampton going into Winnicottin? You know, are we really all prepped up the same way? And sometimes that question to answer is no, you know? But this might help level that playing field. So when somebody goes into high school, they have the drive, they know what's expected of them, they already know what's going to be happening and you can see where it's going to go from there.
Yeah, this is going to be the same language that an eighth-grade teacher and any part of the district's science teacher would be using this language to assess their students. And so things like Caitlin's map is a resource she can share with other science teachers. So they start to have common language, then they can, they can kind of draw it together. And you're already seeing from the beginnings of that this year with so much work together. SAU one.
If I can, yeah, I could talk about this for a long time. But one of the, one of the benefits that comes in the 2020-2021 school year is the ability to aggregate, pull this out of a power stool and see across all of our districts how many times these competencies have been assessed, how well our kids are doing, and look at any polls, to your point. And that leads right into more professional development. Hey, how can we as an SAU help PD around X, Y, or Z, whatever, whatever we're not being successful in?
Nice, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Great job, Mike.
All right, moving on, we have a public comment. Seeing none, we got to move on. November 12th, public meeting, approval of the minutes. Okay. I have a first and a second, any discussion? Thank you, all those in favor? Right? All right, moving on to December 10th, public meeting. I may kind of wish to approve this. And I will second that. Any discussion? All those in favor? Right, abstaining? Thank you. We're going to move, we're going to recommend that we move down to our new business for voting purposes. We have a couple people that youuded to earlier, so I'd like to discuss these first, then we go back and do the minutes, if anybody has an objection to that. Okay. We'll go to Homeland Security Assessment Report.
Mr. Farrar? So the, so the Seabrook School District, along with all of the SE21 member districts, did receive our most recent Homeland Security Emerging Emergency Management Assessment Report. That assessment was conducted, oh, I believe it was September, Seabrook. This is, this is an assessment that's conducted every three years. And this involves a Homeland Security representative who comes on-site, performs a site visit, analyzes security at the, at the school, and then makes recommendations for any security improvements. So there, there were very minimal recommendations included in this report. However, I do, I just want to report back to the board that the Facilities Committee has reviewed as far as facilities-related items. And then the Joint Law Safety Committee will be convening shortly to review the report. And if there's any plan that needs to be developed, we will put together that for any improvements for this, this coming year and long term.
Thank you. Any questions?
Are we allowed to, the information to know what we, like what they want us to shop off on or? And they don't have plans of things, of the items that they want?
Yeah, so that's, that's not, that's not something that we would discuss in public. If that's, if that's something you're interested in, we can either do offline or we could do during public, I mean, non-public. I will, I will.
Yeah, just as a share.
This is very, this is very minimal.
Yeah.
Thanks. Any other questions? Okay. Moving on to donation from the PTO.
I have a motion to accept the...
No, go ahead and write that. That should require some audits from transportation possibly.
Yep.
Make a motion to accept the donation from the PTO of $1,000.
Okay, I have a first and a second. All those in favor? Right? Thank you. The next one we have is a donation from Dick's Sporting Goods. It's for $1,000 to the, towards the Seabrook Middle School baseball and softball athletic programs. And I'll make a motion for that. Thank you. We have a first and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Next one we have is a donation from, oh, he's doing it wrong. O'Brien's Journal Store, $2,295. Motion to accept is for the food service program deficit. And I will second that. And I would like to say, special thanks to O'Brien's, Dixie, and the PTO for the generous donations for our school this year. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Right? Okay. I will take a motion for going to non-public.
Can I just ask you, one thing we ought to discuss before, I'm sorry, I should have pointed this out earlier. The calendar does have a number of items. One request I want to put in front of you is regarding the school board regular meeting in February. You have deliberatives scheduled for the third. What we're doing with a num, with the number the boards have decided to do is move their meeting to coincide with those deliberatives. So 4:30 on the third, if that were to work for you, that would coincide with your deliberative later that evening.
Isn't that seven o'clock for the deliberative session?
It isn't, so it wouldn't really need to be 4:30, it could be 5:30. We've done that with at least one board.
Push it back some.
We could.
I don't mind doing it on the third, but.
Say 5:30?
It's like an hour, it's going to be enough, hour and a half?
An hour and hour and a half is generally enough, so 5:30 or 6:00, whatever you want to do.
I recommend, I would recommend 5:30 on the third, if anybody, because we have to go over there, right? No, it's here in the school.
It's here.
It's in the general, isn't it?
It's here.
And we're going to do it like we did last time, a couple of, we usually come here to our board meeting, leave the board meeting, go to the general, then come back.
And then come back in case you have to do anything. Yeah, so, so 5:30, shall we say?
I think that works for me.
Works for me.
Okay, well, it's 5:30.
Let's make that change. Great, thank you. Now, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
No, it's okay. I knew that they were just meetings, but I forgot that wasn't. Huh? Sorry.
Yes, we do.
Yep. So to keep up with the things that we're talking about with people leaving, I'll take a motion to go to non-public. Actually, I'll make a motion to go non-public in Point R S A 91, Tech A, Tech Sonic 132 Alpha, I believe it is. Any discussion? All those in favor? Right? Okay, we're going to resume the public meeting at 17:00. I'm going to make a motion to accept Patricia Valtchuk's resignation with regret. And all of these retirements happen at the end of school year, right?
This retirement is happening at the end of the school year, as is the other one. It's the resignation. Yes, that's right.
Okay. All those in favor? The next one is, I will accept, I'll make a motion to accept Anna Williams' retirement with regret at the end of school year. Any discussion? All those in favor? And the next, the last account we have is for Leanne Bruno. I'll make a motion to accept her retirement. For Leanne Bruno at the end of the year.
I would call it a resignation.
Huh?
I don't know if it's a retirement, it's a resignation. It's a resignation.
Okay, then, sorry.
No, that's fine.
So I'll change it, we'll change it to, I'll, I accept Leanne Bruno's resignation on the 31st. With paying the stipend as, as discussed. Any other, any second? Any keys going second? All those in favor? Thank you. Does that cover the, the second part of that?
It does, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to go back into our regular meeting. We're going to go to, sorry, superintendent's report.
Thank you. You have a copy of the report, I'm only going to mention a few of the items. One is the Legislative Roundtable. Mr. Farrar, again, has done a great job of getting this particular meeting started. This will be the third time we've had a chance to meet with our legislators to discuss upcoming legislation. I can tell you from my involvement in the NHSAA Legislative Committee that there is a lot that is on the table for the legislature to look at. So we will have a lot to talk with them about. Please try to join us on February 7th and let us know by the end of this week if you're able to, to make it for that. On March 3rd, we will have our second meeting of the Safety and Security Task Force. That involves chairs of each of our school boards, along with our police and fire chiefs, our principals, our school resource officers. We've added representatives from Sacred Heart and First Student Transportation to talk about the variety of safety and security issues in our schools. And Dave Hobbs is leading that work and doing a great job. We have a very, oh, please, yes.
So are you going to be attending that meeting? Okay. And those topics that we discussed during our meeting will be addressed during that?
I believe they are all, yes.
I have those in the notes.
Yes.
I can put them on the agenda. I have them created, you can't.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The joint board meeting, we've tried to keep this really succinct and we hope valuable for you. So we're having, first of all, this second read of policies that were adopted or that we're going through, have gone through first read with each of our boards. Remember that to make that happen, we have to have at least three of you at the meeting. Otherwise, we can't actually do that adoption. But we have two presentations, one by John Vander Els, who's been doing a lot of work with our teachers, who's going to present on the next and future steps in our competency-based work. I think that'll be a great presentation. And the other, which should be of a lot of interest to you, is Dr. Arkelion has arranged for Daniel Quarter, who's legal counsel to the New Hampshire Medicaid Compliance Alliance, who is going to try to talk with us about what in the world exactly is going on with Medicaid in New Hampshire. So we're counting on a really interesting discussion that night because there are some legislative things that are happening right now. Our Policy Subcommittee meets on the 28th. I wanted to point out to you that we've just started to get into the work of actually taking some of the policies, many of which call for a set of administrative procedures to be developed, and we're starting on those. I've given you a list of where we're actually starting with those. So if you have a particular interest in any of those, let us know. We will come back and share those procedures with boards, even if the policy doesn't require board adoption. And I talked to Barrett Christina yesterday and he thanks all of you for making sure that our boards are going to be represented at their delegate assembly this year. They, they have not had great participation from this area of the state and they are really thrilled when I was telling him that all of our boards have designated people who will be there to be part of the discussion and the voting on their, on the resolutions that they will send forward. So that's my report, thanks.
Clarifications, who is actually going to our board? Forrest?
Thank you.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you, you have my written report in your board docs. I think Caitlin really took care of the first chunk of my report. You know exactly what we did during our written team meetings. Right now, public thanks to Lauren, we are going through all the documents created during that November 20th, consolidating them, refining them, and putting them together in a way that makes sense for an SAU. So that's really good work, it's a lot of work, and thank you for that. Secondly, the topic habits of learning. One thing, actually, Aaron Milbury is chairing a committee that we put together across the SAU to look at, yeah, to look at some of the more enduring competencies that we care about as an SAU. Communication, collaboration, self-direction, creativity, those things that are, you know, part of everything we do. So that work is getting started. We've met twice. We've actually invited John, John Vander Els in to our first two meetings and he's been a great asset for that work. We're looking specifically at developmental language, to your point, what that looks like in our different grade levels. So I look forward to keeping you guys posted on the progress and public thanks to Aaron for chairing that.
Thank you. Executive Directors, Student Special Services.
Thank you.
Thank you. Two topics in my report this month. The Seco's Care Team is presenting to all faculty across the SAU. Last week, we presented to Hampton Academy, Winnicott High School, and North Hampton. And tomorrow, we'll be here at Seabrook Middle to present to all the faculty to describe the whole process, the purpose of the team, and how the Seco's Care Team can support the efforts that are already happening as far as identifying any signs of self-harm or harm to others across the student population. The other piece that we're getting going here is the Suicide Prevention Building Liaison. So legislation dictates that we have to provide suicide prevention education to staff and to students, and we need to create a plan by May 3rd, 1st, so we'll have that for you before that time. We identified building liaisons across all our districts, and we'll be attending the signs of suicide training on January 24th in Hampton to get started with that one.
It's a big topic.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any questions? Director of Special Services.
You have a copy, I think, of Anna's report here, do you think anyone can say to that, or?
The elementary principal? I guess you're in front of that.
Yes, I'm just sitting here tonight for Stephanie. And you have the report, I think we've already recognized Leanne in her years of service here at Seabrook, and wishing her the very best as she fits on until all the things that are left for her to, to enjoy. A big thank you from the whole staff. I know personally, she was a huge help for me just getting started, and just very always willing and ready to, to support all the staff, and I'm sure that's been the case all three years here, so she'll be missed. As far as events, you know, you have your, your events there. I mean, one of the things that just started up again this week is the Sea Stars Program for Session Two, and started that off this week. Tomorrow, we have a staff meeting that's gonna be focused on report cards in the elementary school, and how those teachers are going to create, how the language that they want on next year's report card, K-2, 3, 4. Martin Luther Day, New School Monday, and then we have our next professional development day is after school for, on the 22nd, and that will also be related to current development work, so much that teachers and teachers have time to do. As far as the program updates, I guess Stephanie has here, there's a new art club that's happening during the lunch and recess times, during the recess time, excuse me, in elementary for third and fourth graders. Similar to the, the elementary students being able to work in the library during their recess for their SAS TV. They've added another component of adding an art element, so kids can have that enrichment. We've got a fit from that enrichment, so thank you to Susan Hayden for helping to do that. Professional development, the ALIS training, something that Middle and Elementary's doing online. And then the, again, we've talked so much about creating those report cards and the QPAs, and that work's still being done in the teachers' PLC groups during the school day. There's a couple of donations here, this is a donation from Unitil to help with the nurses' snacks, and then a donation to help with the lunch account, I think they took care of that in the presentation, so, any questions?
Oh, it's a, thank you and self for the donation for the nurse. Any questions?
Middle School has been busy, or certainly right before the holidays was busy. We had an assembly to recognize our outstanding Rams, which are students who were recognized for being respectful, accountable, motivated, and sick. As we had done last year, those students had the opportunity to play scooterboard hockey against the staff, which is always popular. I thank all the staff who are willing to get on a scooterboard and play hockey. I'm not sure who has more fun, the kids or the staff, it might just be the staff. And we were at a dead tie, we even played in overtime, and it was still tied, so it was a lot of fun. We recognized and listed off all the students, and whoever wanted to participate was able to. During that assembly, we also recognized honor roll, high honor, honorable mention students who had worked hard in trimester one. So it's great to be able to recognize students working hard, and then have a good time, as you can see in the pictures. And we had student council elections, so congratulations to all of our student council reps and officers. It's exciting to have a student council in the building again, I believe they had one years and years ago, but Jeff McNally and Courtney Sparks will be heading up student council and working with the students. And we actually had a group of students who have done a leadership program for Brewster Academy who asked to bring student council to the school, so that's kind of their project, and they worked with me last year and with the teachers to get it going. So I'm really proud of those students for making it happen. And then the sixth grade had their annual Mexican Fiesta, which is always a great event, and you can see again, they have a great time with their projects and showing off what they've learned about the Mexican culture, and bringing in some food, and then doing the Mexican hat dance at the end, so. That's always one of the year's highlights. We had a lot of donations this year, you approved two of them, so thank you again to the PTO and to Dick's, but also Seabrook Donut for their donation towards the Washington DC trip. Alan and Sarah Gay for their donation towards a lunch account balance. Secos Do Services, which was used for assistance to families during the holidays. And Five Below, that was a fundraiser that was also done for the Washington DC trip. They have a strong group of parents who are working with the teachers to raise funds for Washington DC and hope to defray the cost so that as many students can go as possible, so that's been really awesome. So that would be a thank you to the, all those parents working hard and our eighth grade team that really invested in, in doing that. And also, it's not on my report, but a thank you to Lauren for bringing in the presentation, but also Caitlin French for being willing to step up. She's one of our newest staff members, and she did a phenomenal job being, being willing to go in, in front of the school board, so I really proud of her. It just states to remember.
Thank you. Any question?
Yeah, we're happy to discuss that with you. We'd be happy to discuss it with you.
Because they seem, they seem to really, really want to.
So why don't you be in touch with them and talk with them?
Yes, we have brief conversations in the school, certainly there's pros and cons to both, so we can certainly have discussion.
Thank you. Facilities. I know Terry's not here, we have our report.
Yes, we've already included the maintenance report and contract services report. Everything is fairly regular maintenance that's included. I would be happy to answer any questions. I also would be remiss if I did not mention that Terry really appreciates his staff, they do a really good job.
Thank you. Finance.
Can I, can I say a word about the Winnicott report?
Sure.
Okay, so one thing I do want to bring to your attention in that report is Bill's mentioning of Winnicott starting their first endeavor in the Unified Sports. So Unified Sports, which is a, which is a growing phenomenon across the country and in New England, is a situation where students who have intellectual disabilities and students who not deal with intellectual disabilities participate on the same team. They had their first game in Portsmouth last week, they have their first home game this Thursday afternoon. We are thrilled that they have started this endeavor, and our kids are over the top about having started this endeavor. So if you get a chance to stop up and, and see one of these, these sporting events, they're really very moving to watch.
I mean, what is the actual sport?
Basketball.
Is it basketball?
This is basketball, there are other sports, but this is basketball.
There are Seabrook students on the team, too, which is great fun.
Okay, thank you.
So including your packet is the fiscal year, year-to-date expenditure and revenue reports. Both indicate that we are moving along fairly well under budget, with the exception of special education. You'll note that between the special education account and special education transportation account, we are $400,000 over budget. So that brings our total budget to about $160,000 of available funds. As such, we will likely be exploring recommending a withdrawal from the special education expendable trust towards the end of the year. So I just wanted to, I know we discussed this in the past, but that is something that I wanted on your radar.
The transportation.
Transportation represents $104,000 over budget.
Any questions for finance? We talked about that last month, I forgot what it was though, man.
$273,000, that is for tuition under special education, that is, that is our district. That's, that's the, the whole.
The other ones, did we get our final numbers of the insurance?
For health insurance?
When we go into the budget committee?
So we, we received a guaranteed maximum rate in October, that was 1.8%, which we were compared to previous years, we were very happy with that rate increase. We will not receive the actual revisits until March timeframe. So at, at that point, we'll report back. I do not anticipate much of a change, because it's such a low rate currently, so I would, I would anticipate it remains at 1.8%.
So like what we discussed last month for this, for this insurance rate? We've been in the 13, 14, 18% for the past couple of years. This one, this one low one, don't expect it to be happen next year, we expect to go back up. It just happened to be, we hit it on the right mark, and it dropped in at 1.8, you know, because what was last year, it was, it was 13 and.
So it came down to obviously 14%.
It was 18.5.
Yeah, it was 18.5, that's what we budgeted for.
Yes.
You know, and then, but it came in at 14.5. And then this year here, they dropped it out to 1.8, and we can't expect to see that next year, I mean.
I would never make those assumptions.
Right, exactly. You know, I don't want, you know, we're gonna see this in the budget, and we're gonna discuss budget again. We got a couple more meetings coming up with it, and one of those things is realize that we're having a good year for the GMR as far as insurance goes, but don't expect it next year. It's a, it's a very hard thing to swallow, because you're like, hey, we got down to this rate, and you're like, yeah, well, next year they can come back and get us right back up in the 18% again, you know, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's based, it's based on, on claims history, I do an 18-month trailing average. So, you know, it's, we're at the, we're at the whim of the health of our employees, so. I mean, there's some, there's some other factors involved as far as healthcare costs, however, healthcare costs haven't, have only been increasing. So that's, that's certainly not gonna help us, that's gonna hurt us. So, so yeah, it's something that we, we're fortunate this year, but I would not expect it going forward, it might just.
Okay, anything else for finance? Thank you, and please let us know when we think we have to start moving money around for the trust, and if there's any other way we can try and dwindle that number down at all. I know it's very hard, because such, it's a, I'm, we can't schedule, we don't know what that number's really gonna be every year, but.
I'm gonna try to, I'd like to hold off as long as possible, so that we, we can minimize that withdrawal as best we can. But I, I mean, just based on where we are now, or if we want to withdraw, it's a certain amount of that.
Okay, thank you. All right, I believe we're at the next meeting. No, not yet. We have the Seabrook Budget Committee meeting, January 20th at 7 o'clock. Now, that one is at Tom Hall?
It is.
I just made sure I get that one to you. So that's the Tom Hall on 20th. SAE joint, joint board meeting on January 21st at 6 o'clock. Joint Board Policy is January 28th. Deliberative session is February 3rd, we are going to hold our meeting. Now, our next school board meeting will be February 3rd at 5:30, and we'll update that accordingly. And that should take care of all the meetings. I don't think we have anything extra that we have, no, we see, none of that, okay. Seeing no public comment for dinner items, recovery retirements, and resignations. I believe that is all. Anything else you have to say? Okay, I make a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, aye? Thank you very much.
Thank you.